The roll, please.
This conference will now be recorded.
Back to say it again.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. Five o'clock, the regular session of the Planning Commission in City Lancaster, please come to order. Ms. Winter, would you please call the roll?
Chairman Vos.
Here.
Vice Chair Smith.
Yeah.
Commissioner Cook.
Present.
Commissioner Harvey.
Present.
Commissioner Moore.
Here.
Commissioner Paris. Commissioner Paris.
Present. Sorry, my computer.
Oh, you're good. Commissioner Tufts.
Present.
We have a forum.
Thank you. Before we go any further, have you been able to identify all of the callers? Whom they may be en masse?
Most, most of the callers, the staff I've been able to identify, but not from the applicants.
Okay. They understand the regular meeting of the Planning Commission, the meeting is being conducted virtually pursuant to the Governor's Order in twenty-nine dash twenty. Because this is a telephonic meeting, all votes will be taken by roll call and in reverse order than you called the roll earlier, this winter, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. All right, I'll offer the invocation this evening and Vice Chair Smith will lead us in pledge. A brief prayer, shall we pray for his guidance? As we give the decision, make planning commission decisions for our community. May we use only our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and challenges which matter we consider before us. As we debate, guide us as to act always in accordance with what is best for our community and for our fellowship. We ask in your name, amen.
Please stand and place your right hand over your heart. Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and its sprawl.
Thank you. Ms. Winter, do you have announcements?
Speak on the public hearing portion of the meeting will be unmuted once we have reached that portion of the agenda. Thank you.
All right. Have you received any email comments or speakers regarding public business from the floor?
We do not have any emailed comments.
All right, so we would ask now for the public business from the floor. In accordance with the Governor's Order, we are accepting public business from the floor telephonically relative to any agenda is item. Typically, agenda items, when we call them, we accept testimony from the applicant, then we listen to any public, public comments as well. Before we close hearings and deliberate. Do we have any comments from any of the call-in speakers? Other than applicants, their representatives, or speakers on matters on the hearings before us? Apparently not. Okay. Before we move, email comments must be checked before any action can be taken on each agenda item. Roll call must also be read for each commissioner to state their vote. Callers will be able to provide comments during the public hearings. And we ask you, who are making comments, please do not interrupt or talk over other speakers, myself, or any of the other commissioners. The first action item is approval of the minutes of the special meeting of June twenty-second, two thousand and twenty. Do we have any email comments on this or? Ms. Winter.
No, we do not have any email comment.
All right, do we have any speakers? Apparently not. All right then, may I have a motion, please?
Make a motion that we approve this from the special meeting of June twenty-second, twenty twenty.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. There's any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Tufts.
Yes.
Commissioner Paris.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Harvey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cook.
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Vos.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Continued public hearings, these are public hearings that were opened at previous meetings and those hearings are still open. The first item is conditional use permit one seven one nine. Do we have any email comments or speakers?
We do not have any email comments.
Okay, I heard somebody talking, but I.
I think it's just.
All right. So. Does Ms. Swain on this one?
Yes, Chairman Vos and Commissioners, the applicant has requested that this item be continued to the August PC meeting for them to continue working on the requested directions to the plan.
All right, thank you. The members have any comments or questions of staff before we consider a motion? No, all right then, hearing done. The appropriate motion would be to continue conditional use permit seventeen dash nineteen to the next. Well, we're getting some sort of feedback.
Sorry.
Were you playing the zipper, Ms. Winter?
Was not.
That wasn't it? Okay. All right, so the appropriate motion again would be to continue conditional use permit one seven one nine to the next regular meeting. Who'd like to offer the motion?
I move to continue conditional use permit number one seven one nine until the August twenty twenty.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? We call the roll.
Commissioner Tufts.
Yes.
Commissioner Paris.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Harvey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cook.
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Vos.
Yes.
Motion passes to continue seven zero.
Thank you. Next item is, is also a continued public hearing, this is item number three, conditional use permit one eight one seven. This item was continued from the last meeting.
Chairman Vos and members of the Planning Commission, before you tonight is conditional use permit number eighteen seventeen for the construction and operation of a gas and mini mart development with alcohol sales on approximately five acres at the northeast corner of Twentieth Street West and Avenue K. The proposed development would consist of a five thousand one hundred and eighty-seven square foot mini mart, a six thousand nine hundred and thirty-five square foot fuel island canopy, and a car wash. The mini mart is located along Twentieth Street West, close to the intersection and with Avenue K. An automated car wash is located along the north boundary of the project site. The fuel island is located in the central portion of the project site and the mini mart building screens a portion of the pumps from view from Twentieth Street West. The pumps can be seen from Avenue K, however, enhanced landscaping is proposed along the Avenue K frontage to screen the pumps from view to the extent feasible. Additional landscaping is provided throughout the project site. Access to the project site would be from a driveway on Avenue K and a driveway on Twentieth Street West. The driveway on Twentieth Street West would be right in and right out only. The car washer mini mart buildings are shades of creams, tans, and yellows with stone accents. The gas island canopy complements the design and colors of the building and contains the standard circle K identifier. The applicant is also requesting a type twenty alcoholic beverage control license for the off sale of beer and wine. Section seventeen forty-two of the Lancaster Municipal Code averns the sale of alcoholic beverages and requires a conditional use permit. Per section seventeen forty-two twenty of the Municipal Code, all mini marts are considered primary off sale uses and as such are subject to the distance requirements. The separation distances applicable to the proposed project are three hundred feet from any residence or residentially zoned property and five hundred feet from other primary off sale establishments. These distances are measured property line to property line. There are residences and residentially zoned properties immediately adjacent to the project site to the north and northeast. And two primary off sale establishments are located on the south side of Avenue K within the five hundred foot distance. These are the AMPM and Chevron. As such, the proposed project would require a waiver from the separation distance requirements. In order to grant a waiver, the commission must make findings of convenience and necessity. The proposed project can make the finding for convenience as an additional seller of alcohol provides the public with more choices. However, in order to make the necessity findings, the items identified in section seventeen forty-two sixty, including whether the project would duplicate the services or provide an over concentration of licenses, provide a niche market not filled by other establishments, and the viability of the use without alcohol need to be met. As shown on the map provided to the commissioners, there are several establishments which sell alcohol for off-site consumption within the vicinity of the project site. This list of uses was obtained from the ABC website and it shows the ABC licenses as active. Not counting the two mini marts for which the waiver is being requested, there are five gas station mini marts, one liquor store, three drug stores, and four grocery store Target Costco type establishments within approximately a mile of the project site. There are also two hotels which sell alcohol to guests only and several restaurants. The proposed project will provide the same service at several other uses in the vicinity and is not considered a specialized use. As such, the development would not be able to make the findings for necessity. To date, three letters have been received on the proposed project, one from Caltrans and two from law firms. These letters have been provided to the commission. No members of the public have submitted comment letters. Staff is recommending approval of resolutions twenty dash twelve and twenty dash thirteen approving the proposed gas station mini mart car wash development and denying the request for the ABC license. I would be happy to answer any questions and the applicant's representatives are also on the call and can answer questions.
Thank you. We did receive earlier this afternoon, I'm not sure if members actually all received and reviewed the email. You did mention Ms. Swain, we received two letters from attorneys. The most recent one came in about one forty-five or a little later today from a Ms. Bartley. Gaines and Stacy. So for the record, we have all received that, whether or not everybody's had a look and do it, I don't know. Also for the record, we did not, however, receive a, what we call an uncontested letter for this particular project agreeing to what staff's recommendations are. Which basically is outlined in the letters from actually both law firms. Just a reminder for everyone, we at our previous meeting where staff briefed us in a public meeting on this particular application. We asked for the staff to prepare the various alcohol uses that Ms. Swain just pointed out, which is in our packet. There's some one hundred and five pages plus the comment letters that we've received on this application. So does anyone have any questions of staff, members? Do you have questions of staff before we proceed to hear the applicant or any other public comments? No? All right then. So it's our practice typically to give applicants, their representatives adequate leeway to present their project. And we'll be happy to hear from whomever the applicant's representative is. Ms. Winter, would you coordinate that, please? Do we have an applicant that wishes to speak on this?
Good evening, this is Alicia Bartley on behalf of the applicant. Can everybody hear me?
Right, Ms. Bartley, thank you. Just hold on a moment, Ms. Winter, you, your mic wasn't on when you were talking.
Sorry, is Ahmad on the phone?
Yes, Ms. Ms. Bartley, I think is identified, identified herself as the applicant's representative. Do I have that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay. So please proceed.
Good evening, Commissioners, thank you so much for your time this evening. And also I wanted to thank staff for the very thorough staff report. As noted in our correspondence that you received earlier today, we do agree with staff's recommendation of the project in general. We, we do agree to all of the conditions of approval that, that staff has outlined with regard to the gas station and mini mart use. The reason for not agreeing completely with the staff recommendation is that we, we do request that this commission consider our request to allow alcohol sales at the site. We do believe that findings can be made in support of approval of the, of the alcohol sales, both for public convenience and necessity. As staff correctly identified, this would be a convenient use for customers of the project to be able to purchase alcohol at the same time that they're purchasing food, gas, and other sundries available at this, at this location. As, as I believe also noted, this will be a circle K location, which is a well-known national and actually international brand. I paused for a second because I wasn't sure if somebody was, was speaking, but it sounded like it was just feedback. With regard to the, with regard to the alleged over concentration of alcohol at the site, I would note that within the requested waiver area, there are only two other mini marts. And what we're off, what we're seeking here is the ability to operate a project on the same conditions as these other, as the other mini marts. In order for us to be a competitive and successful business in this area, we, we do believe that it's appropriate to sell alcohol. Alcohol sales are a, are part of the, you know, standard operation of circle Ks throughout the nation and indeed, as I mentioned earlier, internationally. So what we're seeking, once again, is just the ability to operate a business on the same terms and conditions as other, other businesses, other mini marts, other competitors in the area. What we have offered, we have suggested that we would limit alcohol sales to six AM to two AM. We would agree to limit those hours further if the commission thought that would be appropriate. We also have proposed ten percent of the floor area for alcohol sales. I do know that the code requires a small, a five percent limitation, and we would agree to limit the floor area as that this commission deemed appropriate. We also do understand from commission or from staff that one of the kind of concerns in this area is homelessness and whether the addition of another alcohol sales location in this area would exacerbate issues relating to homelessness. And one thing that I would like to point out is by developing this property and by, you know, bringing a successful business to this, to this corner, we think that naturally, issues related to homelessness will start to subside as the, as the corner becomes a successful, you know, commercial enterprise with, with patrons visiting it. So in our letter, we have detailed the number of conditions of approval that we think are appropriate for the alcohol sales. We have also identified, again, in detail, the findings that we think are in support of granting this request. Once again, circle K, the operator is supposed to be circle K. This is a, you know, well-known brand that I think this community can count on to enforce the conditions of approval and ensure that this location remains a good neighbor and a safe business that I think the, you know, the, the, the community in general can be proud of and will be a welcome, I think, addition to, to the community.
Have you concluded your remarks, Ms. Bartley?
Yes, I, I have concluded my remarks. I am available for questions. I do have the rest of the applicant team available by telephone to answer specific questions and I look forward to answering those questions for you.
There may well be some. So it's, it's yourself and the applicant on another phone line, correct?
That is correct.
There's two speakers on this item?
I believe we also have Fred Matian on the, on the call. Fred, are you, are you there? I am not sure if he's there or not, but I, I believe there's two, there's two speakers and I believe that there's more representatives on the phone if there are questions, but we can settle that if it's necessary to call on them.
Just want to make sure whoever is identified, that we identify clearly who the speakers are or may be for the record. I didn't clearly hear, understand the name you said, so I don't know what it was. Did you understand that, Ms. Winter?
I believe she said Fred.
Last name Matian, M A T I A N.
All right, that's it? All right. Thank you for your comments. Staff, do you have any response before we get into our Q and A? Ms. Swain? I know you, I see your lips moving, but I'm not sure we can hear you.
We're having some technical difficulties, just give us a minute, please.
All right, thank you. Well, we'll wait.
Sorry about that, she's calling in on a different line, but her audio wasn't working, so it'll just be a second.
Okay, thank you. Think we had this trouble the last time or two, right?
Can you hear me now?
That sounded like a fire alarm, but it's not, right?
No, it wasn't a fire alarm.
To continue this hearing again.
I'm back. We just took me off of the video portion of it.
Okay.
So in response to the, the comments by the applicant, the mini mart is not limited to five percent for alcohol because it is considered a primary off sale. The square footage limitations are for incidental off sale. So that, that part's not relevant. The numbers are at ten percent because I requested that they count all of the area within the cooler because people in theory could access it and you could store kegs or larger six-packs or larger packages of alcohol. The conditions of approval that Alicia referenced are conditions of approval already attached to the project in the event that you were to approve the alcohol component of it. Those conditions of approval come directly out of the code and we have limited alcohol sales to the hours of six AM to twelve. sales to the hours of 6:00 AM to 12:00 AM Monday through Sunday. And I'm here to answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you. Members, any questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Go ahead.
I have a question. I have a question for either the applicant or the applicant's representative, and my question is, are any of your Circle K's or are any Circle K's operating without the sale of alcohol?
This is Alicia Bartley on behalf of the applicant, and that is an answer that I do not have, I do not know, I'm not aware of. Let me, Fred or Ahmad, are you on the phone, and can either of you answer that question?
Hi, Alicia, this is Ahmad. I don't have that information either. I was hoping that Fred, do you know Dylan is on the phone?
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. This is Dylan Tidwell. I work with Circle K. I'm a developer for him on the West Coast, and been working with the applicant on this particular project. To answer your question, I am not aware of any Circle K's. In my experience, do I have knowledge of any that are operating without the sale of beer and wine? As was pointed out by Ms. Bartley, sale of beer and wine is absolutely integral into the kind of the concept of a mini-mart. Customers visit the gas stations, they expect to see certain services from waters to sodas to basic daily needs, and along with that, with the beer and wine is an expectation. So I hope that answers your question.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Do you have the? Do we have a site plan up, please? And the elevation's ready?
Hold on just a minute. I'm going to hang up the phone, and then I'll log back into the computer.
All right, thanks. This is a reminder, and a question from David Cruz. This item has not gone to ABC, is that correct?
That is correct. This item does not fall within the purview of ABC because it is a planning commission entitlement.
So it's incumbent, just as a reminder to ourself, it's incumbent upon us to consider design guideline issues as it relates to this project in total as opposed to the narrow conditional use specifics that we typically see. And I'm running three devices, so bear with me, please. Could we have the site plan report planned out, please? Now getting a go-to meeting, have a great meeting on the screen.
She's just pulling it up.
So what's the problem with getting the floor plan or site plan up?
We're just having a few technical difficulties.
So when we had our staff briefing, whatever it was, whenever it was, some weeks ago, I raised the issue about a couple of items. One to do with, you go to the site plan, please? Keynotes on? Or you can leave the floor plan up, there's just no keynotes on it. Keynote number 10 talks about an external switchgear for Edison. As I pointed out to ourselves in the past, we have not approved projects with external switchgear. We require switchgear as well as roof ladders to be inside of the building in an electrical room. I don't see that on this site plan. I also see an exterior CO2 tank, which I don't believe we've seen before. At any rate, those two locations front, the principal street frontage on Avenue K. Remind you, I don't believe they should be approved the way it's designed. Let's talk about the canopy treatment. Can we have a elevation up, please? All right. That's the proposed canopy that the applicant is recommending. It's been our policy in the past and according to the design guidelines that the entire facility be articulated, and we required in the past all canopy treatments to have a cornice similar to what's posed on the building. And I don't see that here.
Okay, I mean, I can add that. I was unaware of that requirement.
Well, how many we've done, I don't know, Ms. Swain, but that's what we've been doing.
This is Alicia Bartley on behalf of the applicant, and we would agree to include that on the canopy.
I had asked earlier today, I'd asked the city engineer about condition number 87. Could we have the site plan back up, please, which shows all the street sections? I think it's the first, the first one, yeah. The first one, yeah, there you go. Condition number 87. Mr. Neblo, would you talk about that, please?
Yes, Jim. So condition 87 conditions the project to construct the median, restricting the left outs from both the applicant's property and also the adjacent Clock Tower Plaza along 20th Street West. And 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 as part of that requires the conversion of that dual left, which does not allow or prohibits U-turns now to allow U-turns moving forward in side lanes, that left turn lane. So sign his modification, signal modification, push the curb back along their frontage by eight feet, and restrict the right turn movement, the westbound right turn movement on Avenue K to make that work.
So it's right in, right out on everything on the site?
Right in, right out with a left in on both of them, so they still have a left in, they just can't make the left out.
So you look, I don't see the left in off of K you're talking about?
No, K K is right in, right out only. On 20th Street West, it's right in, right out, left in.
And only three stacking?
In which which?
On the left, yeah.
The left into the Clock Tower is probably two cars, and the left into their plaza should accommodate about five. It's hard to see on that scale there, but yeah.
What about what about the speed limit in that in that section? Any changes to that proposed with all these new turning movements?
What would have to happen there, Jim, is we have to go out and do a survey, a speed survey after all of the changes are implemented, and then utilize the 83 percentile speed to set the speed limit as required by the vehicle code.
Ms. Bartley, can I get you back? So tell me about your business plan. And I I heard what you said earlier, and I did read your letter. Tell me how you justify the necessity of the project in the first place in a declining That's my point of view, and what I would consider borrowing volume, sales volume from other existing operations. Explain to me the justification for that.
I believe Circle K has done the research that justifies having a Circle K in this location. They wouldn't propose the project otherwise. I believe maybe perhaps Dylan can can speak to to that.
Yes, good evening. This is Dylan Tidwell. We have looked at this property. I think we started working on it back in May of 2016. As it relates to the competitors in the area, this is a hard corner location with access to both K and 20th Streets. That traffic pattern in that area is what supports a store. This would this location or Circle K's investment in the area would not work if it was mid-block away from a hard corner. It's just their prototypes. It's almost the same as when drugstores were developing 10 years ago, to get the hard corners, to get the exposure, and let them know that they're a convenient opportunity for residents in the area to get goods and services.
What about the volume shrinkage of your competitors? There's only a finite amount of fuel available, sales in the community. What is the justification from from borrowing that from neighbors?
I don't think we see the pie as finite. It's a growing community. More people are moving into Lancaster and Palmdale area. There's homes that are, especially with the proximity to the freeway at this location, we don't see it as as a pie that's going to be stable over time. It's just going to continue to increase.
All right, thank you. Anything further you care to add?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. I recall we approved a Circle K at Sierra Highway and Avenue I, which has not been built, if I recall correctly. And if I recall correctly, I think Mr. Drake was one of the presenters on that. Am I, is my memory not real good, or am I correct?
Chairman Voss, the only Circle K that I am aware of within the city limits that we've approved is Division and K, and that is currently undergoing plan check.
Is currently what?
Undergoing plan check with building in safety.
Ah, finally.
Yeah, the lawsuit was resolved.
Commissioner Voss, this is Dylan Tidwell. I have the same recollection that you did, that there were a small, can't remember the intersection, but it was a northwest corner of an intersection that where there was a small Circle K going on like a, I want to say like a 30,000 square foot lot. I'm aware of it, but not involved. That is a franchisee location that had rights to that particular area to operate and sell with the brand name of Circle K. This particular location is going to be corporately run, along with the location over Avenue K and Division. So what's happened over the years is as there's been consolidation and Circle K, while the name has been around, the ownership has changed over the years. Right now, currently, the operating desires of Circle K is to operate as a corporation, much like Home Depot or Lowe's, not with franchises. So they do have to honor their existing franchise agreements, but like I said, this location and Avenue K and Division will be all corporately run, and that's all I have to answer for that question.
All right, thank you. So we've come full circle. Company stores, franchisees, back to company store. And in 10 years, we'll go back to franchisees again. If we live if we live long enough, it's been my experience anyway, that's how it turns out, maybe 15 years. I think that's all I have. Let me look at my notes. I think that's all I have, yeah. Any other, any comments from other members, please? As I can't see, I don't know if you, you can take down the site plan, but we can have members back up, please. All right, any closing comments from the applicant or the representative?
Alicia Bartley on behalf of the applicant. I just want to thank everybody again for their time and consideration in response to Mr. Voss's comment regarding electrical and interior roof access. I believe our floor plan does show that, so maybe I misunderstood the comment, but we do have an interior equipment room. We do have roof access shown on the inside of our floor plan.
All right, thank you.
So Commissioner Voss, this is Dylan Tidwell. Regarding the CO2 container, that also is an enclosed location as well.
Say that again. And by the way, it's Voss, not boss.
Boss, sorry, apologies. The CO2 container is an enclosed is within an enclosure. Got come through?
Thank you. All right, then. All right then, if there's further, it would be appropriate to close the public hearing. Consider a motion. We have two resolutions in front of us, resolution twenty-dash-twelve, which is a resolution to approve the project. I've raised my concerns and someone else has, so what's your pleasure, folks?
Question, Chairman Vos. On resolution twenty-dash-twelve, that resolution implies that we would vote with the alcohol to approval, and then on resolution twenty-thirteen, is the other option to, to vote but without the alcohol, am I reading that correctly?
No, twenty-twelve is the approval of the project, and twenty-thirteen is denial, assuming you approve twenty-thirteen is denial of the alcohol beverage license. Twenty-twelve without amendment would be to approve the project the way it's designed currently. And I typically don't telegraph my votes, but I tend to vote no.
I, I'm sorry, I have a question, so I, I was following, I think I was on the same line as Commissioner Cook, I thought that the first portion of the recommendation for twenty-dash-twelve was strictly for the project in its entirety, but then twenty-thirteen was just the project itself denying alcohol, so.
No, Commissioners, it's two separate resolutions. The first resolution is to approve the gas station, mini mart, and car wash, so the actual development. And the second resolution is to deny the alcohol, the first resolution does not approve the alcohol.
So we're still making two motions regardless, is that correct?
That's right.
That is correct.
Okay, okay.
So, Ms. Ms. Wayne, just to be clear, if you, if we want to approve the entire project including the ABC license, we would adopt the first resolution, and then we would deny the second resolution, is that correct?
That would be my understanding.
Excuse me, Ms. Wayne, that's the way it's written. So what's your pleasure on, uh, resolution twenty-dash-twelve, member?
Go ahead.
Sorry.
No, go right ahead.
All right. I move that we adopt resolution number twenty-dash-twelve approving conditional use permit number eighteen-dash-seventeen to allow for the construction and operation of a gas canopy island, car wash facility, and mini mart in the commercial plan development zone at the northeast corner of twentieth street west and Avenue K, and adopt a mitigated negative declaration.
Thank you.
My second.
Did you second, Mr. Paris?
Yes, Chairman.
All right, thank you. You kind of garbled there, I know.
I apologize, I've been having computer issues over here, so I'm just trying to limit my bandwidth to make this a lot easier for everyone.
All right, thank you, so we have a motion, second, any further discussion? I'd like to point out again that the project before you does not meet the requirements of the architectural design standards before you, including the canopy as well as the switchgear location. And based on that, I intend to vote no.
Chair, Chairman, real quick, if we were to vote yes, can we vote yes with the assumption or the understanding from Ms. Bartley and the applicant that they would be fixing those problems? Or do we need to table this so they can fix it and we can come back and vote again?
Well, we got three choices, we either vote for it, or vote against it, or amend it to include conditions appropriate to conform to the architectural design guideline.
Okay, so if we were to change the adopt, if we were to adopt the resolution with your said amendments, we can do that, correct?
I'm sorry. For one second, you don't necessarily need to amend the resolution, you can direct the applicant to work with staff on making the revisions that were discussed at this meeting.
I'm sorry, you think I would know how to do this by now, but clearly I am inept. So, Ms., should, should Ms. Smith redo the adoption saying as such, or can we vote?
All of this is on the record, so there's already been a motion which was also seconded, but we can incorporate, if the commission which wishes to do so, we can incorporate the comments that we're discussing, I'm getting a nod from our city attorney who is in my office, that we can proceed as such.
Thank you.
Have you satisfied with that, members?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
I see, yes, I see you nodding your head, all right, thank you. All right. So if we're ready to vote, Ms. Winter, please call the rule.
Commissioner Tufts?
No.
Commissioner Paris?
On the condition that Chairman's recommendations be met, approved.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Harvey?
No.
Commissioner Cook?
No.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Vos?
No.
Motion fails. Three, four.
You say three to four?
Three yeses, four nos.
All right then. So it's not necessary then to bring up, uh, resolution twenty-dash-twelve then, is that correct? Ms. Corbett is there somewhere.
I'm sorry, hold, just one moment, please, Chairman. I'm sorry, Chairman, what was your question, please?
Is that Ms. Corbett?
Yes, it is, I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Oh, the question is, it's not necessary then to bring up twenty-dash-twelve since the project has not been approved, is that correct?
Hopefully that is correct, as stupid as it may sound, I would suggest that you go ahead and make a motion and vote on it since it is on the agenda.
All right. Thank you. So then we'll consider a resolution twenty-dash-thirteen.
I'll make the motion to adopt resolution number twenty-dash-thirteen denying the alcoholic beverage control ABC type twenty license for the off sale of beer and wine associated with the proposed development in the commercial plan development zone at the northeast corner of twentieth street west and Avenue K.
Thank you.
My second.
Thank you, Mr. Paris. All right, any further discussion? Please call the rule.
Commissioner Tufts?
Yes.
Commissioner Paris?
No.
Commissioner Moore?
No.
Commissioner Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Vos?
Yes.
Five-two.
Five-two, can you say?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, the applicant has the opportunity then under our municipal code to file an appeal for the commission's decision in an appropriate timeframe. Or the state of Cruz, if you choose to do that. All right, thank you for your participation this evening.
Thank you for your time.
All right, the next item is new public hearings, item number four is a conditional use permit one-nine-one-seven. So without objection, the public hearing is open on conditional use permit one-nine-one-seven. Is that, who's presenting on that, Ms. Campagnon or Ms. Garbey?
I'll be presenting.
Okay.
Good evening, Chairman Vos and members of the planning commission, this item before you is conditional use permit number nineteen-seventeen, a request for a type forty-seven ABC license and limited live entertainment. The project is located at four-two-four-one-seven Sierra Highway, it was constructed in nineteen fifty-four and has operated as a restaurant, but is now currently vacant, and has been vacant, vacant for years now. As stated, the applicant is requesting a type forty-seven ABC license for beer, wine, and distilled spirits in a bona fide restaurants. The hours of operations are going to be from eleven AM to twelve AM. In addition, the applicant is requesting for live entertainment. They will be requesting for karaoke Thursday through Sunday from five PM to twelve AM, and they're requesting for specialty live entertainment, mainly a live mariachi band, but occasionally they'll have special events for events like the Super Bowl or New Year's Eve. And those hours of operations would be from eight PM to twelve AM. The map shown here shows the nearby alcohol uses, there's three nearby, it's Rubens Bar and Grill, Snuggies, and Sierra Liquor. Public safety and the sheriff's department have reviewed the project, they noted that the project is in an area of high crime activity. They indicated that in order to prevent alcohol-related criminal activity and to assist with enforcement, the sheriff's department placed their conditions, as you see in your packet, conditions such as onsite security shall be provided for all live entertainment, motoring and the parking lot, parking lot is not permitted. In addition, I'd like to add that there is a condition, condition number twenty-four, that states that the CUP shall be subject to a semi or annual reviews to the operations warrant such review. That concludes staff presentation, I'm available for any questions, and the applicant and his representative are on the line as well.
Thank you, thank you. Members, comments or questions? We'll hear from the applicant, anyone?
I have a question. Did we address if there's a nine-one-one emergency for fire, earthquake, or medical, how they're going to access that driveway, take care of the emergency, and then exit since there's only one way in and one way out, was that addressed?
So, beside us proposing the restaurant, there, there are actually two driveways. And so they would be able to exit in and out, I don't believe it's a one-way, but the applicant can go ahead and confirm that.
There's not a one-way.
Hi, there, I'm translating on behalf of the applicant.
May, may I ask where the two driveways exist, I know the one coming off of Sierra Highway, where is the other driveway?
It's still on Sierra Highway, sorry. Same entrance, you just have to turn on the left side, it's kind of like a dirt road, but there's enough from there.
So the exhibit we have identifying the existing site plan shows two points of ingress and egress, as the site currently exists, or is that proposed to be developed that way?
That's how the site currently exists.
The way it exists.
That's correct.
All right, thank you. Ms. Cook, any any further?
I believe they did somewhat address the crime situation that I had issue with in that area after monitoring and going over to that location. Security is only going to be offered though for entertainment hours, what about other hours for dining? Will there be security all the time there when the public is coming there to dine?
Security will be provided all the time during dining times also.
Thank you.
All right. So do we have any emails on this particular application?
We do not have any emailed comments.
Okay, and we have an applicant's representative? It looks like
Yes.
speakers, is that correct?
Yes, Kevin Franklin.
Okay, so whoever wants to, to speak to us first on, from the applicant or their representative, please proceed.
Okay, this is the applicant representative, I'm Kevin Franklin. I'm a retired ABC investigator from the eighties, and I've been a consultant now for more than twenty years. And again, we've heard the project is a four thousand square foot restaurant, it's been in, around since nineteen fifty-four. And since I was an investigator, I did have a chance to do some investigating myself in terms of mitigating factors and the things that ABC looks at in terms of noise and disturbances that may occur in an area such as this. The one thing they look at is residential, there's no residents within a hundred feet, two hundred feet, three hundred feet of this location. So the noise for any resident that might be residing there is none, or minimal. In terms of the second thing they look at is security, and the applicant has already talked about providing security during those times when they're needed, especially during the entertainment hours. He'll probably have additional security depending on the size of the event, if there is such a thing. The other thing we wanted to discuss is the types of entertainment. As you know, it's a Mexican restaurant, so traditionally, they have mariachi-type style music and performers occasionally. The performance will take place in the removable seating area in the middle. You'll see it there. In the middle, somewhere in the middle by across from the bar area, in between the two seating areas. Those are removable seating. They don't plan on having any type of DJ. They do plan on having a karaoke machine, because again, in those type of restaurants, karaoke occasionally, you know, makes everybody happy. So again, they would, if they do have karaoke, it would be in that same area where the mariachi, where the removable seats will be. In terms of parking, again, that's not an issue, they have plenty of parking, as shown on their site plan. So again, ABC likes to look at the noise. So again, ABC likes to look at the noise and disturbances to the community, which are again, are minimal. It's on a very major street in Lancaster, Sierra Highway. And I would hope, looking at the old diagrams, there hasn't been a lot of police activity in terms of problems when the restaurant was open and operating. And that's verifiable, you know, with your department, with the sheriff's department. So again, it looks like it's going to be something that will add to that community. Again, I've driven by several times. I have homes in Lancaster, and I've always wondered when is someone going to open those businesses again? And he'll be, you know, spend a lot of money on this place. So he deserves the opportunity to get it back to where it used to be, a nice viable place for the community to go, have a little bit of light entertainment, and it's a family atmosphere. There's no promoters, there's no entry fees. Everything will be done just to satisfy the customer. And the one other unique thing is, in Los Angeles, you don't find too many owners that are the tenant. And that's how it is with this case. The person on the line and the owner, the property owner, as well as the tenant. So as you know, when you're a property owner and a tenant, you tend to pay attention a lot more. Any questions?
This is my chair. I just want to clarify something. Commissioner Cook had asked a question about security. Was that they would have security at all hours, including dining hours? And just now when you spoke, you said it would be during special events and perhaps sometimes when they have bigger events. Can I get a little clarification on that?
Yes, what I mean by that, generally with, especially in the police department, ABC, and I would assume with the planning department, you know, they like bona fide security. And if an applicant, as you know, security, there is a cost. It's not going to be free. So in my terms, in terms of working for the government, we try not to overextend the person by having security 24/7. And I know the applicant, you know, wants to get the license and all in agreement, but they're not thinking about the cost. They don't need security during non-peak hours. But of course, when there's entertainment and things of that nature, I think in your police department even wrote that about 100 patrons and they have to have a second guard and things like that. You know, you just don't want to hammer them at the beginning with security 24/7, because that's not really realistic. Because if one person is in the restaurant, you know, for their first three months, they don't know what their clientele is going to be. They don't need security in the mornings. But you know, in the nighttime, I could see that. But again, because they're new owners, they might want to start out with security and be heavy on security, just to run off all the vagrants, just to let everybody know we're a bona fide business, we take care of business, and then they can reduce it a little bit. But if you put it on 24/7 with the numbers, that'd be quite expensive. As you know, security is minimum $26,000 an hour, not including tips and everything else.
No, the hours of operation is recommended and as you've agreed to in your letter, I believe.
Yes. It's 12:00 a.m., I believe.
Did we get a uncontested letter from this applicant, Ms. Winter?
Well, that was going to be my next point.
Excuse me, just a moment.
Okay.
We did not receive an uncontested letter.
Okay, so the recommended hours of operation are not 24/7, as you keep stating.
Not security.
And I doubt whether you intend to operate 24/7.
That's for sure.
So.
Now, in the hours of operation, and again, in the spirit of cooperation, of course, any tenant or landlord or anyone in history going for an alcohol license, when the city planning department is requesting 12:00 a.m., every, everyone will say, yes, that's fine. Especially when they own the property and they're trying to get this investment going. They'll say 12:00 a.m. But from a professional standpoint, if you look at the ABC department, which is the one who deals with the liquor license, he's already signed conditions for them till 1:00 a.m. to sell alcohol. The police department, yes, they said 12:00, 12:00 a.m. But if you notice on their conditions, they wanted to give him an extra hour, which anyone realistically would do on a weekend, so that when he does have the live entertainment event, you know, 1:00 a.m. But the reason they didn't sign the form was because it was a miscommunication.
So you understand, Mr. Franklin, this commission has the authority to set hours. We don't.
Yeah.
And you can make your case, but the final determination is the commission, not the police department, not the sheriff's department, not staff.
That's for sure. That's for sure.
And the recommended hours of operation are 11:00 a.m. to midnight.
Yes, that's your recommendation, right. We were proposing a little bit more, and once we got the letters from the police department, as well as ABC, of course, you know, we like to bring that up, just to point that out. But of course, we recognize that yet you have the sole authority to make that decision.
Do you want us to move forward with consideration of this application tonight, or you want to continue it and go back to staff and have a conversation?
No need to have a conversation with staff, we've done that. And again, it would just be spinning our wheels.
So the answer is no.
Correct.
All right, thank you. Anything further you'd like to add?
No, not at this time. Maybe the applicant may want to sign in, I'm not sure.
No, she would not like to add anything.
Okay, that concludes our end of it.
All right, thank you. Questions from members?
Answering that? No.
When was the last time that a restaurant, a bona fide restaurant was operating on that property?
From my research, it was 2016.
Yes, that's right.
Had we approved a type 47 license at that location historically?
It's approved prior to being incorporated to cities. So we didn't have any approvals for an ABC license. This would be the first one coming to PC.
So was it 41, not a 47?
I would need to double check.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear clearly, Ms. Campagni. Yes?
Trying to stay away from the sun here. It was, what they're requesting is a 47. And previously, I would need to check if it was a 41 or 47. But with my research, and it said bar and grill and previous restaurants, it includes distilled spirits in the previous menus.
All right, thank you. This story's had a long history of not a lot of successes, unfortunately, through the.
That's for sure.
Last few years. All right, anything further from members or staff?
Yes, I was wondering, are they going to have a video surveillance system? I mean, if they're going to have some of these events going on in that parking lot out back, is there going to be some sort of a video surveillance system?
Yes, they'll have full camera system. Inside and out, for their safety as well as, you know, the community. And to help law enforcement in case things go down, you know, a block and a half down.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Franklin, if I may, excuse me Chairman, I apologize. If I may ask, how long is the storage life of the camera systems? Are you running them, where they, you know, automatically repeat and write over themselves? And if so, how quickly or how soon do they do so?
Okay, they haven't installed those yet. You know, they're waiting on all the permits and everything goes before they put up their cameras.
I understand. So if we were to put some sort of limitation in the sense that you store said data for 30 days, is that something that the applicant is willing to participate in?
Well, I think at this point, you know, I've already heard from the commission, they make all the decisions and not trying to jump over everyone. But I'm pretty sure they'll hold the tapes or CDs or whatever it may be for 30 days. That should not be a problem.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to question or comment?
Yes, I would like to just clarify and reiterate. So is the applicant willing to have video capability to store at a minimum of 30 days? Is my first question. My second question is, is the applicant willing and will conform with security during business hours, regular business hours?
But security not during peak times in the evening, evening hours only. Not during the middle of breakfast and not in the mornings, afternoons, but the evenings. At dusk, you know, 8 o'clock. That way, he's only paying his guards four hour minimum, which is four hours. Eight to 12, you know, or eight to closing, whatever.
Thank you for your answer.
Okay.
All right, anything further? All right then, we have no, do we have any other speakers online, Ms. Winter, on this?
At this time, the public phone lines are now open for those wishing to speak on the public hearing for CUP 1917. Any callers wanting to comment, please press star six now. State your name and then wait until you are called upon. Speakers are limited to three minutes each. And it does not look like we have any callers.
Caller number three, it's got an open mic, but I'm not sure who that is.
I don't think there are any speakers.
All right, very good, thank you. So then, without objection, we close the public hearing and consider a motion on resolution 20-16.
I move to adopt resolution number 20-16 approving the conditional use permit to allow a type 47 on cell general eating place alcohol beverage control license of approximately 4,090, I mean, 4,091 square foot restaurant within the existing building and the like industry. Zone located at 42417 Sierra Highway. AKM 3128-008-005 and 006.
Thank you.
I second.
Mr. Paris, all right, thank you, sir. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please call a roll, Ms. Winter.
Commissioner Tubbs?
Yes.
Commissioner Paris?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Harvey?
No.
Commissioner Cook?
No.
Vice Sheriff Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Vos?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-2.
All right, thank you. Good luck with your venture.
Okay, thank you.
All right, the next action item, public hearing on tentative tract map number 72534 and conditional use permit number 1508. This is an item that we've seen before. So without objection, public hearing is open on this. Do we have any email communications on this, Ms. Winter?
No, we do not have any email comments.
All right. Do we have an applicant here online with us? Or a representative? For this item?
It doesn't look like it.
Okay. Ms. Garbey is the presenter on this. We've heard a staff report. Anyone care to hear the staff report again? No? All right. All right then. The applicant, if their representative is somewhere in this communication, has an opportunity to address us. But I see none or hear none. So it would be appropriate to close the public hearing without objection, consider a motion.
I move that we adopt resolution number 2017 granting a two-year time extension to September 18, 2022 for tentative tract map number 72534 and conditional use permit number 15-08 for a residential plan development of 109 single-family lots, 1.17 acre private park, 0.25 acre patio, and a drainage base.
Thank you.
I second.
Who's that, Ms. Harvey?
It's Chairman Vos.
All right then, it's moved and seconded. Further discussion? Please call a roll.
You're on mute.
Commissioner Tubbs?
Yes.
Commissioner Paris? Commissioner Paris?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Vice Sheriff Smith? And Chairman Vos?
Yes.
Motion pass 7-0.
All right, thank you. All right. Where are we now? Oh. Okay, Ms. Data Cruz?
Just a couple of. Yeah, just a couple of items this evening. The first one, just a reminder, you can, when you make a motion, feel free to simply make a motion to adopt the resolution and only the number. You don't have to read the entire thing. Sometimes it's a bit of a mouthful, so feel free to simply mention the resolution number, and that goes on record, and that's a valid and legal way to make the motion and get it passed. So that's item number one. The other item is related to, this is just more of a heads-up to the commission. The city has modified the way the agenda documents are posted online, as well as to your iPads. Just as you had perfected accessing them on Granicus and iLegislate, that is now changing for the August meeting. It is a completely new system. We have not, I have not seen the format. However, we were told that the current format is completely different. It's a brand-new platform. Ms. Winter will coordinate training for everybody. It would most likely be a Zoom training with the members of Prime Gov. That's the name of the new system and the new platform. And they will be showing you what that looks like on the user end, on the public side, and so on and so forth. So, prick of us, don't shoot messenger. I didn't choose to do any of this, but nonetheless, it's a change that will be happening. We have yet to see it also, so we'll be learning it right there with you. And that's it.
How exciting, how exciting. We all remember when we transitioned to this system in the first place. How seamless it was. Remember? Uh-huh. Good thing there weren't many windows handy that we could throw our handy-dandy little electronic device out of the windows. Anyway. All right, well, we look forward to the training, don't we all? Sure. All right, thank you, Ms. Dela Cruz. Anything from the members on the commission's agenda? Nope? All right. So it becomes not public business. So we open lines for public comments on items not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes each. Should we have any?
We do not have public speakers.
No speakers, no one dialed in, nobody on the screen. Okay, good. All right then. So if there's nothing further from anyone, we'll stand adjourned until Monday, August 10th at 4:30 p.m. for a telephonic meeting pursuant to the Governor's executive order in 29-20. Thank you all for your participation and patience tonight. Much appreciated. Have a pleasant evening.
All right, have a good night.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, everyone.